Gentlemen, I would like to call order this public meeting of the Board Johnson County Commissioner on this twenty-second day of June two thousand twenty at ten o'clock A M. Please pray with us and be careful to stand with the pledge of allegiance.
You bow with me for a moment, please. If you're a heavenly Father, we come to you today with the realization that our world is in a state of turmoil. Dear Lord, we are witnessing attacks on our sovereignty, our religious freedom, morality, traditional family values and such. Dear Lord, we just pray that you be with us today and guide us through this period of turmoil. Help us get back to where we should be in recognizing you as the only salvation that we'll ever have and the only problem solver that will ever be able to solve these problems that we're facing today. Dear Lord, be with the people who defend us. We're seeing them besmirched and attacked around the country. We just pray that you be with all of the people, public safety. We greatly appreciate what they do and we understand their quality of their job. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I plead to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cooperative agreement between Edinburgh and Gump Fore and the Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
I'm gonna say this is probably just year-to-year update on this to approve.
Any legal, I'm sorry, I do this way out here. It is in very beautiful red letters. And a motion second, any legal, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public Safety Communications, appointments to nine-one-one Advisory Board.
Pete Brandt, nine-one-one Director. So just a reappointment of several individuals. One, Jane, the lady, Mrs. Greenwood, please, she and John Llamas retiring. James Eixon has agreed to take his place on the advisory board. And all others have agreed to.
I'd move to move forward with the appointed people that Pete has identified on our sheets.
Second.
Motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Remove the Tim O'Callaghan Summit.
So, you know, last year we created the position of the CAD administrator. It's a great opportunity for them, for Mark to learn a lot. There's a lot of classes that they do not teach anywhere other than this summit. So there's actually a, what have they changed is they just don't find a cheaper rate on a room. So the new rate would be four fifty-two eighty-seven for the three nights. And everything is one hundred percent refundable if they do cancel it. And then the hotel is within twenty-four hours, a hundred percent.
What was the date on this, Pete?
Um.
June twenty-second?
Yeah, what's the date?
So that is March two over twenty-fifth.
October?
October twenty-fifth.
Anyway, you can get your money back there.
Yeah, it's.
It's fully refundable.
It's fully refundable if, because of, because of the body respect.
Say myers.
Everything on mine is non-refundable because of myers.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
And motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Remove the extended use vacation time.
So this is actually for me, I have one day. Everything that happened had timed those planned and didn't get to take it.
So I do live six?
July sixth would be the day that I would, I would take this time.
Second.
Motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Verizon Marks.
So this is either reviewed by legal, public, just wanna bring to you guys for track purposes, basically. We use the V text technology with Verizon. And because of, it's not what I meant for the number of messages that we send out and automated. We've been identifying the spambers out of my Verizon. So this will allow us to completely free charge as a junior contract. This allows us to send out more messages with no problems, not being locked.
Second. And motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye. Success, go on, all more?
Pete, I want to compliment you on the airfare on that. That's super.
That's a negotiated price, right? And we usually don't have.
Yeah, normally.
I'm the same.
I'm wondering comparing prices and trying to find some.
And you, during all this, all our public service, our sheriff's office, our M T's, P M A, N R O Center have done a great job with all this. We've gone through the last few months, feels like years, to be honest with you. But anyway, thank you everybody very much. Their hard work and dedication to that and safety of our citizens. Extension Office Building Access.
I am very handsome with the extension office. And so I think currently we are open with appointment only. We're ready to be a hundred percent completely open just to change it. Yeah, we haven't seen any crazy ones of people trying to beat down the door. And I think it'll stay that way, so that's good.
Well, without fair, it's gonna slow that down a little bit.
Yeah, we have lots of people coming in for four H things and making their appointments. But yeah, I think it's safe to have us officially open if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, I'm good with it. If you feel safe, do we need a motion on that?
I would just say, can you do a motion?
I would make a motion to open it back up.
And motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal five, I say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. And you waited till the building got done that next quarter.
Oh, yeah, that one.
I think we're getting a C O on that today, so.
Oh, cool.
I think you're planning pretty well down. Other than that, it's a landscape.
Yeah, lots of work happening on the whole grounds there.
There is a lot going on.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discussion on tree posing roadway safety, yes or?
Luke Mastin, Highway Director. As we discussed at the last meeting, there were some concerns raised about selling a tree on Airport Road. It's current condition. At that time, we had had two master arborists, like the tree, who came up with differing assessments on the risk of the tree being posed. After the meeting, we worked with both of those arborists who performed what would be considered a level-three analysis on the tree. A level-two assessment, what is what they did before, which is a ground-based assessment. It's very thorough, but doesn't provide any specific information on the interior shape of the tree, nor does it provide information on the crown, the top of the tree, without getting an awareness. So both of the master arborists agreed to work together to perform that level-three assessment, which appeared last Monday, June fifteenth. Primarily, that assessment was focused on determining how much sound wood is available in the base of the tree, and comparing that to what they would consider reasonable for the tree to pose a low risk of falling. What they ultimately discovered on the tension side of the tree, which would be the east side, is an average depth of sound wood in the shell of about five inches. So I believe four or five measurements vary from an inch and a half to eight inches. So that's where the five-inch average comes from. There's a decay spot that is of some concern that had about four inches of sound wood there. The decay spot has intensified all the way through the tree. So pretty thin around that hole as well. Compression side, the west side, which is important, but probably not as critical as the tension side in this particular case, also came up with about five inches average sound wood. For a tree this size, seventy-inch diameter, they would have recommended about twenty inches of sound wood around the shell of the tree in order for the tree to really have any likely to stand on its own. So based on their recommendation and their conclusion, which was a consensus conclusion between the two, they believe that the tree is an extreme risk for failure under normal conditions within a one-year time period, which is a lot of words to say that it's, it's time. It was reached the point that it's not going to support itself, given that the measurements that they were able to take. So that level-three assessment did give the arborists additional data, which ultimately led them, as I said, to reach a consensus conclusion on that. It's information that they did not have prior to our previous meeting. So based on the arborist's conclusion, my recommendation would be that we move forward with the process of getting the tree taken down. I would not recommend in any way, shape, or form opening the road with the tree now that we have much better information on its condition with the tree in place in order to help the tree is removed.
How long is that road been shut down, Lord?
About two and a half weeks at this point.
What do we anticipate if this tree does come down? The length that it will take to get it back open again?
So there will be a few things that, that need happen before we reach that point. So it's not an issue of we would be able to, we would not be in a position to be able to go out and remove it right away. We'll need to coordinate with the property owner. The base of the tree, it's on private property, but the bulk of the tree is over the road. So we have some, some shared liability and responsibility there. The very least, we need to coordinate with them, make sure they're clear on the condition of the tree after this level-three assessment and get permission from them to manage the property and have the tree taken down. One factor in all of this that may end up delaying when we can take it down is the overhead power line that runs really directly over the base of the tree. It will have to be de-energized in order to safely remove the tree, even for arborists that are certified to do that work. It's just too close to what needs to be done. There could be some delays in that. We had some preliminary conversations with that electric utility, who, like really every other utility, has had delays due to COVID-nineteen. They have some concerns that they would not be able to get that line de-energized quickly. So that may be our kind of outstanding item, the one that ultimately keeps us from getting taken care of or determines when to be with you.
When you say not very timely, but not very timely, two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks?
Initial conversations with the electric company did not, they did not provide a timeline. So, and which is fair because they, that was really just an initial conversation. So if we've got some, some direction at this point and we're ready to move forward, then we need to work with them to better nail down that timeline.
Is that good energy or arguments?
That's true.
Might have a little bit better leeway with arguments.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I don't necessarily want to imply that we run into issues. I think they, they just have the same issues everyone else has right now. Working on schedules makes it difficult, especially in the summertime, so.
I was always under the impression that if, if there was a tree adjoining your property and its branches overhanging on your property, that you could trim those. You had the right to do that as a property, is that correct? So I was just thinking, if for some reason the owners of the property there, of the trees on, objected to us doing anything on their property, we could just block that thing straight up from the, from the line. And that might even be a way to somewhat satisfy the people who, who like to see that tree for its historical value. It'd still be a trunk hanging out there, but all the upper part would be gone.
As best we can tell from our right-of-way research so far, the right-of-way would end at the edge of pavement. So if we were to cut it that way, it would still be right there at the edge of the road. But it wouldn't be much danger of falling exactly. The bulk of the wave would be going at that point. I would say that, that's certainly an option. If we were to have issues when we have conversations with the property owners, I will say that through this process, I try to keep them up to date on what we're doing and what we have found. The level-three assessment came in on Friday, so I haven't had a chance to discuss that with them specifically. I think they, like honestly, most of us, don't want to see the tree go. But if it's reached the point where it's going to put someone's safety or life at risk, then it's ultimately time to make that choice. So it's not an easy decision, but the level-three assessment has made a clear decision.
Reality is it's going to come down one way or the other pretty soon. According to the report, or is, they give it about a year. So it's going to come down either way, yeah.
And that is within a twelve-month time period. Doesn't mean they think in the last year necessarily. It could come down today, it could come down in a year. That's the problem with a situation like this is it's difficult to predict exactly how long you've got for, for. Certainly, we're looking at, you know, addressing a landmark for residents of the county here. It's not a decision that we'd take lightly. In fact, we've done our due diligence to reach out to actually some very respected people who have agreed to help us with this assessment and provide us the best information that they can in order to guide our decision. At the point that the tree comes down, there could be opportunities to utilize the wood in some form or fashion to memorialize it. And I will say that I'm probably not the most creative person when it comes to that kind of stuff, but might not be a bad idea to look at a museum exhibit, for example. There might be a desire from people in the area to see something built with whatever good wood is left from the tree. So when it actually comes to taking it down, or we'll work closely with whichever contractor is selected for that, we would have the ability to store the wood. If there are any decisions or any discussions that want to take place concurrently, get out what can be done with it to not completely reduce that landmark or that history. So we made a motion, crowd. Motion that I would be requesting is that we move forward with the process of getting the tree taken down, which we're working with property owners to get that information from them, and then working with the energy to coordinate the energies, the energy to position of knowing so that working with them.
With doing this, Luke, with the tree sets, I know this is kind of unprecedented, historical tree. If there's any way that you could secure some right-of-way where that tree was easement, and maybe we can put a historical marker there. But I don't want to stay and keep going back to the landowner and ask. So maybe a ten-by-ten area, but not, not very big. And I know there's no place for pull-offs, so it'll still memorialize the tree. And over time, they'll be able to see if there's, we've got historical markers all over the county anyway, and if there's anybody that pulls over and actually looks at it, unless there's no traffic, then they can sit and read in them, study them, know what was there.
So that's definitely a conversation. Some of the conversations, and they may have ideas as well, too. So potentially, this would be the point that we decide that we need to move forward with the moving in. But there, as I mentioned, there's still several steps that need to be worked out before we reach the point where it actually can.
Look, I don't know, but I definitely would like to see us do something where we can memorialize either pieces of that tree or have someone give us some ideas. You know, I've heard things from making coasters out of the wood to little plaques, to little, little pieces of, you know, just little carvings of the wood that people can buy or purchase. And then, you know, maybe that can be given to a good charity or something. But I'd like to see us, if we're going to take this thing down, I'd like to see us do something further with it and just destroy it.
I agree a hundred percent.
I kind of like Ron's idea about taking the top of it off. Leaving the trunk, to be honest with you.
I.
That would get it out of the trunk as well. Given at least, I think the trunk falling is, little wood is in it. Isn't going to hurt a whole lot other than, you know, maybe if a car ran off for it after it fell down.
We had a van stick more go down that, down Car School Road, remember, a year or so ago? And that, that thing went right down, back there, my wife and I, we were coming back. It was at night, we had to go through, people started to get around it. Then we had one come down out there.
If we're saying that much of the tree is dead and/or deteriorated, it, I don't think the trunk of it, if it's cut off at the edge of the right-of-way, do a whole lot of damage with it.
Potentially. The measurements that we're taking are at the base. So you beat up on where the roots are. We don't necessarily have measurements or a good idea of what kind of condition the trunk's in if it's not that far up.
If you took the top off, that rest would stand there.
Or it's amplified to there later, I would think.
Whatever it could. And then by petrify that.
I would say, I mean, that, that option is something that we can discuss with property owners and see if they're interested in that.
Like to utilize that, or at least discuss that option. All down the road, especially since Commissioner Walz or Commissioner West brought it up, I think that would be at least to us that would like to see something maybe done a little further. I just, I just hate to destroy something like that if we can do something to help preserve it.
The, the landmark could be, or the historical marker could be that trunk. Could be. The, that decision really will ultimately be up to the property owner. They are interested in leaving that portion in place. I mean, at that point, that wouldn't be our call to be theirs, but that's, we can certainly discuss that as a potential alternative.
I'm sure that landowner, thanks to people who are involved in something like that, is hoping something for danger of liability for that property owner of the thing. But is, is there, I know we have a gentleman here, I don't know, is there anyone here that wanted to speak in regards to the tree? I thought so, but if you want to step forward, sir, that would be great. Introduce yourself.
Good morning, gentlemen, I'm Gary Alom. I am the owner of the property. You're speaking of the trees that's on my farm. And I'm in the process of buying that farm by contract, so there are two contract holder owners also. We already had an agreement, pretty much what's going on. I've farmed that farm for forty, that field for forty years. I have many memories like many people do. I can't believe really due to the growth of the tree that's still standing as is because it shouldn't be because the whole weight's on one side. But it is going to come down at some point. Either take it down or it's going to fall with all the deterioration. I believe that safe the tree should remain, if all is what's been said here that it's not. It should come down. I want to know if it's, if it's not deemed determined to be safe. My next question really doesn't matter. I just want to ask you, if it's deemed to be safe for now, who's responsible for monitoring that in the future? I think you've already addressed that, so I'll let that go. To those who have memories, I say cherish it. But if the tree remains, how would you feel if it fell and caused injury or damage to your family or yourself? So thank you for your consideration, and I'm sure the owners will be in agreement with whatever you decide to do.
Mr. Long, I just have a curiosity. Would you or the owners think to be opposed to leaving a portion of that tree as long as it's deemed okay as far as safety and liability?
Yes, I think, again, it goes back to liability as far as I'm concerned, because it goes down, somebody's going to sue against the county and myself and any other owners. So we're concerned about that, the building can stand that kind of loss. But as far as leaving part of the tree trunk, I think it could be done. I have to look at it a little closer, but remember, too, you also have an overhead damage of clearance for vehicles to navigate that road. It's not eleven feet. I think that cuts out there pretty quick, so if you get up to the edge of the road, it might be all right, it may not. I just have to work with the county and see what we're able to do.
And with that considered, too, if you would maybe also consider that with you and the owners that you're purchasing that from, maybe they would give us a little right-of-way there just by that tree. Then I'm assuming that if we had right-of-way there, we could, we would be the liability for that, am I correct?
That's probably correct.
And we could actually maybe even put an insurance on that, I would think, at that point in time. So if, if you just maybe consider that or think about that in your.
We would consider that, if it goes back to what's recommended and what's needed to do that. And I'm sure some amount of memorial there would be allowed.
Thank you, sir. Do appreciate that, and I assume Luke will continue carrying on those conversations with us.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Long. We appreciate your patience and effort.
Memorialize the tree, I found a plaque on the trunk.
There you go. Quite a little bit of that.
Actually, I was thinking the same thing. If we've got enough wood there, that would actually be.
Well, I assume it's. Straight up from the edge of the road, it wouldn't have the overhead that Mr. Long referenced.
It'd be very close to the road.
Yeah, it'd still be close.
What we may end up doing is some sort of path immediate.
When you get a right-of-way on that area, though, that means we can take that tree back a little farther.
Exactly.
And still have enough to maybe put a landmark on it or a historic marker of some kind. I just, I think there's other options here where we can satisfy safety and then, but yet, maybe keep being part of that historic value. But I know right now, I hate seeing this destruction of historical value that's going on right now, and I hate to become part of that. But like this tree's much what's going on right now, and we're destroying our history. So if there's any way to save at least a portion of it, I'm all for that. I don't think anybody's going to object to that or do it safely.
I certainly would object to it. We don't, we didn't start this process honestly thinking we would reach this position. That would happen at some point. We did not know that it would happen within two and a half weeks of when we had that initial site visit by the arborists, so. We want to commemorate it as best we can. One thing I do want to point out, while the lower part of the trunk probably is not, there's not much good wood. The arborists did believe there is probably still some good wood further up than you go. The downside is that has weight to the top, but that's also some newer brutes. So we won't know for sure until we bring it down, but I am expecting there to be a decent amount of good sound wood that we can do something with. And I mentioned a museum exhibit or potentially there would be enough to build things with. So on that end, or to that end, if you don't mind, I'd probably like to engage a few other people with some other departments who are a bit more creative than I am. And since Luke can come up with some other additional ways to help.
You know, I would assume when maybe this, some of the arborists, there may be a way to petrify that portion that's left, too, because I know they've done that in processes where they petrified things. So that would be a.
Concrete, I think, or the base or something like that.
You could just stabilize it, and then we could always put some kind of wire, guide wire or something to stabilize it even further if we had a little bit right-of-way there and bring something down, too. So just some thought, I, I could, you know, there's probably people thinking I'm crazy right now, but there's a lot of people that probably think we should do everything that can.
There, there are no bad ideas at this point.
Oh, yeah, there is a.
Need to run the political office, sir.
You know, the one down the Carver to, like Mount Westmore, Carver Orchard Center tree, that's a bad idea, okay.
You go first. I don't know, Matt, you look, this, this whole year, we've been put in positions that we can't win, so I think this is just another. So, I, I think this is just another for verification of something, we're not gonna win, we're, we're gonna lose one way or the other. Because people are gonna love it, you have people. I mean, we have to do what's right for me.
And that's where we are ultimately, but the, the decision is not easy by any means. It's not one that any one of us wanted to be in a position to have to make, but it's clear now based on the information that we've got.
So, with that said, uh, we entertain a motion to let Luke continue forward in this process and see where we get.
I would, and you know, on the flip side of this, I've also taken complaints from people on that road. Because it is a main thoroughfare to the town, it's a main thoroughfare for people to come through. That it's shut down now for two and a half weeks, we're gonna probably look at another two, so you're gonna have a month, month and a half of this road even taken out of use. Which you look across to the road versus across to the tree, you've got to weigh options here. I, I'm, I'm all for Luke trying to memorialize this tree, I mean, work with the Historical Society, the landowners. Uh, at, at this present time, I would make a motion to remove the tree and start the process moving.
Remove it or try to preserve part of it?
Well, Luke's gonna, there's, that's a wide open question right now. Uh, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, I can make a motion.
Make your motion yet enjoy it.
By getting authority to work with the Historical Society or whoever owns this to, the bulk of the tree, the dangerous part of the tree needs to be removed.
A motion in a second. And, and to clarify the motion, the motion is, is to continue forward with the process of removing the tree, the tried and clean, what we can or a portion of it.
If we can memorialize it, I mean, there's eight, well, veterans smarter at that than we are.
Understood.
Luke's gonna find them and utilize them, and I'm sure he'll report back to us, hopefully by next meeting with some path forward. Not, six months from now, we're still talking about this, and the road's still closed.
There are several, again, I'll say there are several routes around that area of that road that have been taken over years, that Foxbury Road, down the road, a lot of locations around that. Little specific area we're talking about.
Unless you live in a general area.
Then it's open to those people except for having to go over from there to Foxbury Road, I guess, but. Anyway, do we have a motion in a second for Luke to continue further in, and then bring out help, that's what we're discussing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed?
Did Luke from quick here?
Yeah.
Did you get my voicemail, my suggestion? Yes, I, I texted you back yesterday, but we're gonna be partners still on site, uh, and try to assess how much.
They were out there this morning fixing that, but we probably wanna do an assessment because that water was percolating up a hundred feet down the street.
I reached out to the town yesterday just to make them aware that we had some concerns, uh, about that water line break and its impact on the subgrade of the road, so. We'll work with them moving forward, and, and we're going to go out today and try to do an assessment on how, how much damage we think we've been able to.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Speaking with us, I appreciate that, sir.
Under Board of Commissioners, Courthouse renovation project approval of change order number four.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm Dan Cartwright, project manager for the Courthouse Restoration Project. I'm here seeking approval of the issuance of change order four, which is adding or increasing the painting scope of work, particularly it relates to the north and the east facade of the building. This work is actually already completed, uh, but we need to, uh, get the change order issued so it can be built. Upon approval of this, uh, change order, uh, everything will be, the only thing that's left that has, will not, uh, be contracted to paint is the west and the south elevation. Now, what I'm talking about, the elevation, I'm talking about the roof level below, not the stair tower. The stair tower is already contracted to paint. So, uh, the amount's thirteen thousand four hundred twenty. This is a no cost change to the contract, it will be both for the contingency. And, uh, after this change order is approved, we'll still have twenty-five thousand dollars roughly left in the contingency to use for some additional painting and be able to get the entire project painted. Be glad to answer any questions.
I was kinda surprised that Camberline Construction wasn't a little better since I've already mobilized or whatever, but this is.
This is going through Camber.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is going through Camber, you're getting confused with the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, that's too simple.
I'm, I'm, with this, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I want to approve it.
Yeah, nevermind.
Well, I get for not paying attention.
I have a motion to, uh.
The change order.
The change order.
Change order number four.
No, no, I have a second, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now you can discuss.
Thank you. Uh, I would, you want me to go ahead and do that, sir?
It doesn't, whatever you wanna do, Dan, I'm here, I'm off if you want to or if you want.
I, I would, yes, I would like, sir. We have, introducing.
Okay, so, um, Dan did pursue three quotes, uh, pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash five. Uh, this is for the Courthouse basement waterproofing project. The first quote was from Vision Industrial Coatings for thirty-five thousand dollars. That's three five zero 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 point zero zero. The second quote was from Camberline Construction Incorporated for forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, four one two six zero point zero zero. And the, uh, the solicited third quote from Shelby, Shelby Coatings, and they failed to provide a quote.
There you go. You may respond to what you're saying.
I was just surprised, I mean, since they're already there.
Well, Vision Industrial Coatings already there too.
Okay.
They're painting the, they're painting the stair tower. So, they're.
Just, that's curiosity, that's all.
That'd be good for you too. Well, you gotta do what you gotta do. I just appreciate the fact, we, we did best we can to try to figure out how to solve this issue that we've had for years, and that we found somebody that we can defend it to play, and I, I think, from what I understand, from what I've seen with this, we'll all the way to take care of the issue.
That's about so bad, that's been for quite a long time.
I will say, I will say, if you noticed, uh, Thursday of last week, the area where the mini excavator is, there's a dumb trailer sitting on the north side. We did, uh, some little exploratory investigation to make sure that there was, or there was not a subtile down there that, uh, was stopped up or something like that. Because we went back, Jason and I went back and found the old plans, the original plans for the building, and it showed a perimeter tile all the way around. And we didn't know how deep that perimeter tile was, so we wanted to do some exploratory stuff to make sure that what we're going to do is the best approach to it. And so that's the reason why that, that's dubbed out right there. So, we're confident that, based on what the experts tell us anyhow, this should sell the bottom. Now, this does not include any repairs to anything inside the building, okay? This is only the digging up and waterproofing the wall.
We got a good maintenance staff, I'm sure they can maintain it fine, so.
There's.
Forward, yeah, and again, and again.
Yeah, there's a little bit of stuff that's been done, done inside.
I would make a motion to go with Vision, uh, contractors or whatever they go by. Industrial coating, industrial coatings, uh, pending.
Second. And the motion is second, pending, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
I assume they're bid still good since I came in January.
Yeah, I asked him, give me another one with a new date on it. He said, okay, I'll do it, but I never got one, but it's been still good.
It is now.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, just can a storage tank liability policy renewed, just need approval to renew that policy coming here.
That's a good.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed, carry. Do no business, claims, credit card?
Well, I don't have any, anything in particular, uh, as far as expense, but over the weekend, I've done my usual reading. Minutia. And I come across the fact that, uh, Amazon uses the Southern Property Law Center to determine where their donations or contributions go to non-profit organizations, and I got to read about that. And, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the Southern, Southern Property Law Center, everybody, they're pretty liberal in the, in the, their actions. So, a couple of the organizations that the Southern Property Law Center recommended, Amazon provide money for was Planned Parenthood, we don't know what they do. And the other one was, uh, Freedom From Religion Foundation. And if you're not familiar with it, that's the nation's largest and most effective, uh, association of atheists and atheists. And they also support the Center for American Progress, and that's a left-leaning, uh, alternative think, eh, group. That the first CEO was John Podesta, and the current CEO is a lady named Mira Ken, and she's worked in the Obama administration, Phil Clinton administration, worked on Hillary's campaign, so we kinda get an idea where that group is. A couple of the groups that they won't support or spend money or send money to, uh, is the Family Research Council. And that's a, a group that adheres to traditional Christian teachings about marriage. Another one is Alliance of, uh, Alliance Defending Freedom, this is an organization of Christian lawyers that, uh, work to defend religious liberty and free speech rights. And then the other one is the Center for Immigration Studies, and, and this is a group that advocates stronger, more stricter border enforcement. They've actually got those three groups that I just listed, they're, uh, on a list that also includes the Ku Klux Klan and neo-Nazis. So, you can see how they're, the Southern Property Law Center is categorizing a lot of these conservative groups and refusing to send Amazon money to them. Well, what, after I got to reading that, you know, I'm always going through claims on the credit card. And we just haven't an inordinate amount of claims that come through on credit cards, we're relying stuff from Amazon. And so I just went through the credit card claims, and we had a hundred and eighty-one charges. Now, thirty-two of those, I, I, I took off because they were for the sheriff's department, and they, uh, there was thirty-two charges for food at a fast food restaurant, so I think some guys were at a trainings thing or something. So, I kinda discounted those, but even after that, we had a hundred and forty-nine charges, sixty-nine of them were with Amazon. And so then more, now it's starting to get riled up, right? And then I got to thinking, you know, with the COVID nineteen restrictions and the businesses that were closed and are continuing to struggle, we really ought to be thinking about buying locally as much as we can. And I realize that Amazon is expedient, uh, timely in their delivery, possibly some cost savings there, but I think in consideration of what, what they're doing on the contribution side, really goes against what we support. And I think you couple that with the fact that our local businesses could use the business that we're sending through Amazon, so. All I'm suggesting is that our department has an elected officials, would maybe look at that use going forward, and if it's something they can purchase locally, um, I would ask them to do that. I'm not an advocate of spending any more money, and we have to, but, um, I do support local businesses, and I darn sure don't support some of these organizations that Amazon send the money through, so. That's my soapbox for today, just wanted to point that out, give everybody something to think about in that regard. I mean, the country's going to hell in a handbasket, to be quite honest, and if we don't, as conservatives, begin to stand up and, and step up and defend the things that we hold near and dear as far as our traditional values, our sovereignty, our to our country, to the people who defend this country, and there's an awful lot going on. And the only thing we can do, I think, or at least the, the one thing that we can do that adds the most effect, is do it through, through economics. We spend the bulk of the money. We, we ought to just think about how we're gonna spend our money going forward, are we gonna spend it to support organizations that flaunt their agendas in our face, that continually criticize us and try to shut us up? So, there's no dissension there, or no, no, at least impressive or productive conversations. So, that's just something we need to think about as a whole, as a society. If we're gonna save this country, two things we gotta do, stand up for a rise and have its term limits. Those two things I'll probably go, go further to save the country and anything else. But just something that I, see, you shouldn't leave me at home too long, all my, you know, my home. This is what you get, right? Sitting around thinking and writing and reading. Anyway, I wanna put that out there today, and I, and I said my prayer, and I know Chief's here again, and, and, you know. I, I really, you guys, I'll criticize you when, when I think there's a, a reason or I'll question you, not criticize, but I'll question you. But Doug, on, you guys do a great job, and I'm, I'm a big supporter, and it just really tears at my heart to see what's going on in this country and how they're. I, I, I see these videos of these young people with their cell phones, you know, and they're looking for that national recognition, I guess, but standing in front of those people that, that defend their right, they even stand there and do that, and cussing and carrying on that these police officers are. Tell your boys, big fan ladies, we gotta do something. So, when revolution starts, we're being at my house. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I just.
Are you just gonna make a motion? You gonna make a motion to approve mine?
And give them all back.
Sorry.
Move the, through claims.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second to approve claims, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Commissioner, minutes five twenty-six, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, I was behind too, I was, I was looking at the next. Any public comments?
I usually have my five minutes.
Well, Ron, as, as, I truly believe in this country, we have the right to speak our minds, that's what the Constitution gives us. Although I think sometimes you stay on the thing a little too long, you know. I have to say, I agree with about ninety-five percent of what you just said, I wanna make that publicly known, that I also, um, have a regard for this country and our safety personnel and to watch those police officers going in to that zone, whatever you wanna call it, CHAZ or whatever, and then to deal with those people trying to get to that life to save it. Watching those people interfere and act like they behave. I'm glad I'm in retirement as a police officer, because I'm afraid of what I might do in response to something like that. It is utterly ridiculous, it's destroying our country, and if we don't do something about it, we're gonna continue to degradate this country in the direction that we're trying to go and being the best country in the world, and it's just disgusting, and I have to agree with you there. I also agree with buying local.
Oh, yeah.
I always have. Uh, I said when I get elected commissioner, I was gonna bring as much local contracting into this county as we can, we've been successful in doing that, and I'll continue to do that to keep our taxpayer funds in this county as closely as we can, at least in this state, as closely as we can, because our, our local economy depends on that from us, from our support, so. I do appreciate some of the things that Commissioner West says, but I think on some things, you've just got way too long to think about it. This is just living proof why we need to get out. Anyway, let him play pickleball, something, Mike, please.
I'm trying to work it off with pickleball.
Play pickleball with this guy or something, man, I appreciate you guys being here. Anything, Commissioner?
I mean, you've used up all the time today. They don't stand with me.
Well, somebody's gotta do it, somebody's gotta stand. Truth is Truth Podcast on Facebook, Truth is Truth Podcast, got one coming up, I think you'll enjoy that, has a lot to say about what's going on in the country right now with all this, so. Uh, if you're interested in standing and doing what's right, go there and listen, if, if nothing else, you're gonna get the truth, whether you like it or not. With that said.
I do, yeah, sorry.
I have a motion in a second, uh, word, John, thank you very much.